Zilocibin, I'm going to say this wrong all night long, just to let you know. Services in terms of time, place, and manner. So the measure itself created a license and regulatory framework for the production of zilocibin and facilitation of those services for adults 21 years of age and older. The Oregon Health Authority will adopt rules regarding the distribution and manufacturing of these services. Those rules will be published by December 31 of 2022. They are putting draft rules out incrementally, and they hope to have their full rule making out by November 1 for draft or comment. And the Oregon Health Authority will begin receiving applications for licensure on January 2, 2023. So that's the piece that impacts us in terms of people will be applying for licenses from the state. And if we want to have a time, place, and manner code in place, if the ballot vote comes back saying that we want to bring this into our community right away, then we're going to need to put those regulations together fairly quickly here. The OHA rules that they're adopting are not time, manner, and place rules. It's really more licensing and distribution rules. So the types of services that are available through the measure is a manufacturer's license, which is production, and those must be indoors, so they will primarily be in urban environments. A testing lab license, a facilitator license, which is called a server, and that particular license can't transfer this zilocibin products to clients. And so I'm not quite sure where that will be located, but that's not a concern of most communities. And then the service center license, which is more like a dispensary, which is where the zilocibin products will be distributed to clients for use during administrative session. And the rules say that they, the law says it cannot be located within 1,000 feet of a school and must have defined boundaries.
Ask a question?
Sure.
On the school part, so does that mean, I remember when we were going through this with marijuana, there was a conversation about tennis courts that were owned by the school. Does that constitute a school? What about nurseries, in-home nurseries?
Yeah, so we'll go through that, and I'm going to ask you those questions. So no, it doesn't. So the law says private and public elementary and middle schools as described by the ORS. That's the actual school property itself as from a recognized school and doesn't mean all its ancillary properties. And so there are a lot of cities who have decided with their local regulations that they want to bring more properties into the dialogue in terms of the separation. So the two types of licensing that we see will happen here in the city of McMinnville is the manufacturing license, the production, as well as the dispensing license, what's called a service center. And so that's primarily the focus of our time, place, and manner regulations that we're bringing to you. So for local governments relative to this new measure, you have the opportunity to opt out, which you've had a discussion about, and that will go on the ballot. You have the opportunity to time, manner, and place regulations. And there's, in the law itself, it talks about you can adopt reasonable regulations on hours, location, and operation of these licenses. But you cannot apply local taxes and fees to these types of operations, except for you can apply permitting fees. So you can't tax the distribution of the product, but you can, you can apply a fee for the review of the applications. And then the important piece is, just like marijuana licensing, there will be a requirement for what we call land use compatibility statement, a LUX form. And so what that means is, to apply for the license to the state, they first have to get this LUX form signed by the local government that says this is an allowed use, both within the city and on the property in which they're trying to get the license for. So that will come to us. We review it, and we then sign it relative to whether it's prohibited or not prohibited before submitting their license. And so if we have a local regulatory code, that's where we apply that in our review. So in the law, it talks about manufacturers. The law itself is ORS 475A. And it talks about manufacturers. And what it says in the law is they cannot be located on public land. So there's this description that they must have defined boundaries, and public land is not considered defined boundaries. Outdoor cultivation is prohibited, so it needs to be indoors, and the landlord must consent to the use. In terms of service centers, what the law says, it cannot be located within a residence. It also cannot be located in a residential zone. It cannot be located within 1,000 feet of a public, private, or parochial, elementary or secondary school unless the Oregon Health Authority determines that there is a physical or geographic barrier capable of preventing children from traversing to the service center, then the proximity can be reduced to 500 feet. And so they have a FAQ sheet for local governments who have asked questions, and this is one of the questions that came up, is what's described as a physical or geographic barrier? How's the OHA going to interpret that? And their response was a waterway or an interstate would be considered that type of barrier. And then the Oregon Health Authority will use GIS mapping tools for school proximity. So they'll be determining that themselves. And I'll walk you through what some other cities have been doing in terms of local regulations, but you have the option to say, we want to, we want to say it's 1,000 feet, regardless of the determination of physical or geographic barriers. The other, the other time, place, and manner that's in the law is that, again, the service centers cannot be located on public land either because they must have defined boundaries. So what the law allows you as the local government to do in terms of these regulations is you can create regulations that have reasonable limitations on the hours during which a premises for which a license has been issued may operate. You can place regulations, reasonable requirements related to the public's access to a premise, reasonable limitations on where a premise can be located. However, you cannot invoke a separation standard greater than 1,000 feet from another service center, which is very interesting to me because with the marijuana regulations, that was not a provision in the law or in the rules. And as you know, McMinnville has a separation program of 1,000 feet between dispensaries, and it's been fairly problematic for us to manage that with the OHA and their licensing program. And so I'm glad to see that in here because we're not going to have those problems moving forward. So your options are, you can adopt, and this is what other communities are looking at, you can adopt a time, place, and manner regulation similar to what you have for marijuana facilities. It's seen as a similar type of product in terms of impact into the community and benefit. You can adopt a time, place, and manner regulation that's different than what you have for marijuana facilities here. Or you can just rely on the state regulations in terms of what I just described to you that's in there already for time, place, and manner regulations. So I thought I would go through what you have in the code for marijuana, TPM, and then what other communities have done for this product in terms of the codes that they're adopting and the differences between the two, and see if you want to have some dialogue about those differences. So currently in our code for marijuana, time, place, and manner, we do have regulations for locations. We allow dispensaries in our C1 and C3 zones. We do say they must be separated by 1,000 feet. We allow the manufacturing in our industrial zones, so the ML zone, the M1 zone, and the M2 zone. We also say that the locations cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school as defined by the state, and as defined by the state that does not include parochial schools if they haven't been accredited by the state, nor does it include Head Start or preschool. And then we also say that it cannot be within 1,000 feet of the public library, the community center, or the aquatic center. So that's our sort of proximity restrictions. The hours of operations for marijuana facilities are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the development standards for them are that they must be in a building and not in a trailer cargo container or motor vehicle. No outdoor storage is allowed. No paraphernalia can be visible to the public, and no drive-through facilities or temporary facilities are allowed. That's a fairly standard regulatory framework for marijuana in communities. So we looked at what other cities are considering or have already adopted in terms of their time, place, and manner for zilocibin services. And in terms of locations, I've brought in what would be different than what we have in terms of the marijuana one. So in terms of locations, some communities have said it cannot be located on a property with a residence, including a caretaker's residence. So the law says it cannot be located within a residential zone, and some communities have taken that further to say it can't be located in mixed-use development either. So in our commercial zones, if a service center is allowed in a C1 and C3 zone, and you have a mixed-use development with ground-floor commercial and above-floor residential, it would not be allowed in the ground-floor commercial program for that particular property. For proximity restrictions, some communities have taken the school provisions and expanded upon that to include preschool, and also to, to spell out that it also includes high school. They have also described it as they would not like it within 1,000 feet of public plazas and active-use parks, within 1,000 feet of a public library, public park, community recreation facility attended primarily by minors. They would not like it located within 1,000 feet of a recreation facility, whether it's private or public, attended primarily by minors. And then also, they would not like it within 1,000 feet of a licensed daycare center. The hours of operation I've seen out there vary between, in terms of the spread, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then for development standards, similar to the marijuana standards, must be in a building and not in a trailer cargo container or motor vehicle. No outdoor storage allowed, no paraphernalia visible to the public, no drive-through facilities or temporary facilities. And then the other communities that are adopting regulatory codes have also brought in some security measures associated with this, with this particular product, where they have asked for exterior lighting for the properties that are both service centers and manufacturing. And they have also have regular codes relative to waste disposal, so that none of that is accessible by the public. So a lot of control, control measures in there. So how that compares to our local marijuana TPM code is our recommendation would be that the service centers, just like dispensaries, be allowed in the C1 and C3 zones, that they must be separated by 1,000 feet, that's already in the law, and that the manufacturing be allowed in the industrial zones. We also recommend that we include preschool in the school separation in terms, it cannot be within 1,000 feet of a preschool, elementary, middle, and high school. And then I would recommend to you, so in the marijuana code, we talk specifically about the public library, the aquatic center, and the community center. But there, you know, that's not forecasting future recreational facilities that serve minors. And so rather than talking about the element, maybe we talk about the land use, which would be, you know, public facilities attended primarily by minors or something like that. So you're capturing more than just the three existing and able to capture future as well.
Can you make sure your mic is lowered?
My apologies. Will this be used strictly under, for want of a better word, some form of provider who's administering it? Or will it also be like marijuana where you're, you can take it home and do whatever you want to with?
No, so presumably, I'm not expert in any of this, and I want to make that very clear, only what I've read, which is the draft rules in the law. And Adam might have more knowledge than I do. But my understanding is it can only be administered by licensed administrators in the service centers themselves. The worry about the separation, I think, is just accidental access or interaction of people who have, have had the experience and are leaving the facility.
Okay. It just seemed like it was pretty heavy-duty on the location. And if, if the administrator is the only one, way they can get it, I'm just not entirely certain we want it quite that legislated, but go ahead. I get it now.
The draft rules talk a lot about, and again, I don't know much about this at all.
I don't either.
The draft rules talked a lot about the need for time after consumption and managing that and things of that nature that will occur in the service centers. But I'm assuming that's where people presume there's a little bit of risk in terms of the proximity restrictions.
Heather, sorry to interrupt. Part of the time, place, and manner restrictions, from my perspective, would really depend on, on the nature of, of how the product is administered, and certainly the amounts that they're talking about administering. And do we have yet more information about the guidance from Oregon Health Authority in terms of what that looks like?
I don't believe so. So the rules themselves, in their entirety, have not been posted, and the expectation is they'll be posted November 1. There's a comment period till November 18, and then they adopt them and start doing licensing. And many cities have asked over the past year, can we speed up that process so we understand it a little bit better? And the OHA has gotten back and said, no, they can't. So I didn't see anything that specific in the rules when I was looking at them. The law says it can only be oral, an oral consumption, but in terms of amounts, I don't know.
From my perspective, when the law was being promoted to the public, the context was very clearly therapy and, and mental health care, therapy, like assisted guided therapy. But reading through the rules that they're promulgating, it seems less that way and more like, I mean, I realize that'll be a component, but it comes across more like a dispensary to me. Is that consistent with your impression as well?
Yeah, the limitations I see are age limitations. I didn't see a limitation in terms of prescription or anything of that nature, if that's what you're getting at.
Okay. Thank you.
A comment from my point of view, I just, it bothers me because I think 120 hours was stated for licensing on this. But I occasionally seem, looked at allusions to the fact, I keep thinking, surely they're not going to allow somebody who's just off the street to go and get 120 hours' worth of education and open one of these. Hopefully, they will have some form of medical background.
Yeah, so I, I want to make it clear.
I know you don't know, but I mean, this is my problem.
Time, place, and manner regulations, I do not understand.
I know, but it's critical to know one way or the other if the administrator.
But that might be, maybe, maybe the council needs, should invite someone from, from the Oregon.
Yes, I think we should, because until I know that, I'm not going to vote in favor of any of this.
Yeah.
So the other thing I'll note is, currently, there's 65 pages of rules that are published. There's no index, so it's not clear to me if it's the first 65 of 75 or 750 pages. I don't know if it's the middle or the end. It's not clear how much more there will be when the final rules are published at the beginning of next month. And I think that's one of the dilemmas that we have here, is there's, you know, if we knew what the index was, we'd kind of know what was missing, but that's not part of the current publication.
Thanks, Mayor. The other question that I have, and maybe this really is a question for the regulator rather than city staff, is it seems to me that if this law were to take effect on January 1, because voters decide not to extend the two-year pause, at that point, there won't be anybody who is yet trained to open a facility. Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if they've been doing training or not.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think.
They've been working on it for two years, the program, and they've had several committees working on it.
But my point is, I don't think that they've actually, like, I don't think there are any students that have taken the training yet. I don't think that the schools are yet open. They are open. Okay.
I do know, so the reason why I shared with you the LUX program is because that's the first step in the application process and the only part of the application process that the city participates in. So if the OHA is accepting licenses as of January 2, 2023, if someone wants to apply, they can bring a LUX into the Community Development Center on January 2, 2023, and we have to respond within 21 days on that LUX form relative to the city regulations for that, for this program in our community. And then that's it. It goes to the state, and they go through licensing. And if it's like the marijuana program, it could be months before we see it again, and it hits the ground. But we have no more local control over it. And so if, if we are interested in having time, place, and manner codes in place, where we can put those into that LUX form when it comes in, we need to adopt those.
So we're probably best off by going, being as restrictive as possible at this point until we know better.
Yeah, so what I, what I saw, and why I wanted to share with you what other communities are doing, what I saw was a concern of access, of proximity to minors, whether it's access or whatever, just proximity to minors, and minors being under the age of 21, and then also exterior security measures. So no visibility from the public in terms of what's occurring on the inside, exterior lighting and waste disposal, you know, a program as well that's done internal and not external.
Yeah, I hear the same conflict that Councilor Peralta brought up, which is that, you know, in theory, what the voters approved was a therapeutic-type center with a therapeutic-type drug. And what's, what we're looking at are restrictions that are, that are in line with recreational drugs. And, and those two things, it's very difficult to know how to, to step forward. I, I think we should keep moving through the presentation, but I do think we should also try to, I understand you have a heavy time restriction, and we can't wait till the end and then say, do this. It takes time to get through your work. But I think it would be wise for us to invite somebody back from OHA and help us have a greater understanding as well. But let's, let's get through your presentation so we have a good understanding of everything.
Yeah, and I guess what I would suggest to you is you can always, and this is why I've seen other communities, we're behind the eight ball in adopting local regulations. A lot of communities are in their final adoption process, and I'll show you the calendar for noticing. And I guess what I would suggest to you, it's easier to go back into a code and relieve it in terms of creating relief valves than it is to go back into a code and, well, you can still go back in the code and make it more restrictive, but if licensing's already come in and LUX statements have already been signed, those are out the door, right, in terms of that. So development standards, what we don't have in our codes for marijuana, for the marijuana program in McMinnville, is anything relative to exterior lighting and waste disposal. And that's what I've seen in all the other city codes that are being adopted. So my recommendation would be to look at that as well here in that regard. I'm also concerned about the licensed daycare center provision. We don't have that in our codes for marijuana, and we do allow those. We just opened up our codes, if you recall, to make it very, very easy to create these licensed daycare centers, especially in our commercial zones. And if the recommendation is to allow service centers in our commercial zones, I would recommend we have a proximity restriction on that as well for licensed daycare centers. And then we are moving McMinnville, you know, with our planned developments. We do a lot with mixed-use development, and I thought it was very interesting to see what a lot of the metro areas have done in terms of it can't be located on a property with a residence, meaning that it can't be in a mixed-use development as well. Yeah. So in terms of timing, so this is another question. So to adopt codes, we have a fairly rigorous schedule we have to abide by in terms of noticing and public hearing process and stuff like that. And so this walks you through it. The first step is we have to draft the code language, but then we notice DLCD 35 days in advance of the first public hearing. So that's our longest lead time that we have to work with. And then from there, we go through the process of having a public hearing plan, commission, it comes to you as a recommendation, and then you take action. And then the ordinance takes effect in 30 days. So that in the shortest timeframe is a 90-day process.
That sounds problematic for January 2.
Well, but we get close, and I was hoping Walt would be here because I don't know if we could do the emergency audits. So the quickest way to get this done would be to notice DLCD on October 26, which would mean after tonight, you give me direction, go ahead and put something together with these types of things in it. We take that to a work session with the planning commission on November 17, which is their regular meeting. They then have their first public hearing on December 1, because they're meeting twice a month now. They vote on it, send it to you, and you consider it on December 13. And then I don't know if we can do an emergency ordinance in terms of take effect, or it needs a 30-day clause in there, but that would get you to January 13, if it was a 30-day program. And we could put that together, and you still invite someone in from OPS to talk to you about the program, get a little bit better understanding of it. And then when the code gets to you after recommendation from planning commission, there's still opportunity to amend it at that level, too. But that's the basis of the presentation to start your discussion for the work session. I think this slide itself is actually probably the most critical slide because it sort of talks through the different elements of what's, if you want to think about it in the same way that McMinnville has addressed its marijuana program, which is the way a lot of communities are thinking about this, is they're, they're addressing it similarly. So I think they're, they're having the same reaction, Councilor Peralta, that you're having. And, and then look at additive measures to that. That would, that would be what we would recommend here.
Do you know what's leading to that, that, that lends of viewing it in the same way? It's not regulated by the same body? Have you heard any, what's creating municipalities to lean into existing marijuana rules?
I don't know that, actually, to be honest with you. And OHA is involved in the marijuana licensing program as well. They, I mean, there's two, there's two different agencies looking from different licensing sides. But.
Okay. And can we test our audio really quickly here? Council President Garvin has his hand up, so let's try to unmute him and see if it works.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I was just going to add that probably the reason why the TPM is looked at through that OHA lens in marijuana is due to when dispensaries first came on board with time, place, and manner, they were under OHA regulation because things hadn't transitioned to OLCC yet. My thoughts on the presentation, Heather, was, it was great. I think following along our TPM for marijuana is, is fairly a good starting point. And I'd be interested where other counselors are on it. They want to be more restrictive than our marijuana. And if, not tonight, but at any point, they wanted to revisit marijuana time, place, and manner restrictions since they haven't really been visited since we initially adopted them.
Thank you. Other counselors? Discussion, Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what's been brought forward as far as the accessibility of it, of the zilocibin in a mental health capacity. And I think that, that's how it was presented to the voters and voted on. Making it less accessible is concerning. I understand that the time, place, and manner is to protect, is for safety consideration. I'm not a doctor, but the half-life of zilocibin is pretty low, much less than marijuana, and actually significantly less than alcohol as well. So I hesitate to even really do much with such little information about, about zilocibin, and especially when there's such positive evidence of how valuable it can be.
What are our options for having a, I mean, the 26th is what, seven days away, nine days away? I don't, I don't know, something like that.
It's next Wednesday. It's a week away.
It's next Wednesday. So that doesn't even give us a Wednesday for an emergency work session. session. Hmm, hmm, yes, Councilor Peralta.
Thank you. I, I just, I'm not convinced that we need to have something ready to go as soon as, at the earliest possible date. I, like Councilor Payne, I, I feel like I don't have enough information about dispensaries to thoughtfully try and regulate them. I have less concern about regulating, or in terms of, I feel more comfortable with regulating, I should say, processing centers at this point, because that seems like it's a simpler domain. And I just wanted to correct, Councilor Payne and I had a bit of a sidebar, and it seems like there hasn't been any facility yet approved to provide these services as training people. So, I don't think we're going to, like, hit the ground and have a bunch of people ready to open up businesses in McMinnville, and if that does happen, there are state guidelines that are part of the law that are sort of a minimal fallback for us, and so I'm, I'm struggling to find the, the need for the speed with which we're talking about it. I'm open to being persuaded on it by staff, but I'm, I'm just not.
Thank you, and we'll go back to Council President Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on, on Sal's thing, if, if the Lux statements operate like the marijuana did, you bait, the, you lead your application with the Lux statement, so the applicant would identify the property that they want to operate off of, and get that Lux statement, and get through that hurdle initially in their application, most likely well before they do any, anything else. So, on the marijuana side, you need to get your Lux statement into, before you even, you know, start breaking ground on designing your building, or doing your build-out, or anything else that's part of the, the process in getting your, your marijuana dispensary up and going. Your Lux statement is step one, to prove that it's a viable site. So, yes, I understand that there, the training centers aren't open yet, but you're not going to have to get through a training center to be able to drop a Lux statement in the city of McMinnville's lap and start the 21-day clock.
Got it.
And are Lux statements for marijuana facilities, even to this day, trend, we probably send them and see the license issued 12 months later. So, it really is a first step of the application.
Do you mind?
My personal Lux statement through the county for a production facility was approved in 2016, and I got my license in February of 18.
Could you go back to the options page?
Yeah.
In your slideshow. Okay, Councilor Gary, we haven't heard from you, would you like to add your voice?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I don't have many questions at the moment, I, I think the model code is working well, and, and I, given the time, I think perhaps the adoption of the code and then editing from there, but I'm not sure what the timeline is on that. So, as for now, I have no, no concrete questions in front of us.
Okay, so, I, I kind of hear a split council right now, I, I hear that we have two counselors that are interested in adopting the staff recommendation, which is similar, slightly more restrictive than what's in place for marijuana facilities, that are, that are kind of ready to move forward with that direction towards staff, and then I believe I have three counselors who are not really interested in moving forward beyond relying on state regulations for time, place, and manner at this point. Could I just get a, would you say that's an accurate description?
Yeah, pretty much. And if I could, so, with, if it was just the state regulations, what you wouldn't have control over is location of service centers and manufacturers per zone, so it'd be anywhere that's not a residential zone, and then location of 1,000 feet from a state-recognized school, elementary and middle school, and that's it. So, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a proximity restriction to any of the public amenities or preschools. Downtown would fall into the corridor of availability for locating, I'm trying to think of what else there is. I think that's primarily it. I mean, things like, it all needs to be indoors in terms of cultivation, that's in the law itself. Having exterior storage is not in the law, so we would have to work through that, but.
The, sorry, Mayor, one.
Please.
Heather, you had some corrections on the, can we go back to the slide where you had the updates to the marijuana TPM? Yeah. These are updates that you want to make to the marijuana TPM as well as potentially in putting them into the psilocybin law?
Um, I think, based on what I've seen, people are doing the same thing for both, so I don't know, I don't, I, I do think for the marijuana one, there is a misnomer that a dispensary cannot locate downtown because of a proximity to schools, but based on the state school definition, that's actually not true. And so, if, if there is an interest in having restriction from private schools and preschools, we would want to put that into the marijuana TPM as well.
Mayor, follow up if I may?
Please.
Yeah, so I'm very much in favor of all the red line corrections, the additions that you made to the marijuana TPM that I'm looking at here. I think those are all good corrections, irrespective of what we do with psilocybin. I just wanted to put that out there.
Um, excuse my ignorance, is Oregon the first state to allow these? Too bad. Uh, Councilor Gary?
Yeah, I would, I, reading more and listening more, I think I would echo Sal's comment just that he just made about the desire to incorporate these red lines.
Okay, so, generally, we're hearing this desire to come back and revisit TPM for marijuana. Counselor, Council President Garvin?
Yeah, I was just, wanted to state that, you know, although I'm in, in favor of getting the TPM in place as soon as possible, just so we can see how this rolls out with the, the state, I'm definitely not against getting OHA on a work session and, and then right sizing this, if, you know, we can do something first quarter of '23, or, and open it up a little broader, so we're not restricting access. My worry, if we don't enact local time, place, and manner restrictions ahead of their licensing, from what I've seen in the marijuana sector, is any city that didn't do that saw massive saturation levels in their municipality, because it was the lowest barrier to entry in the market, and so I wouldn't want us to have that happen with the psilocybin centers, and then be having them located, or be having an adverse effect on our citizens, because we didn't take action tonight. But I just wanted on the record that I'm fully in support of revisiting this with more data and modifying our TPM as that data becomes available. So, yes, it might be a little bit more restrictive than some of us would like tonight, but I, I would like to err on the side of caution, and then back it out sometime the first part of next year, than not do anything tonight and only rely on the state, knowing how slow and, for lack of a better term, and if the state has been with marijuana regulations as that rolled out.
Thank you, Council President, Councilor Mankey.
Well, I guess I'm waffling here, I, I agree, let's go ahead and put in the more restrictions personally, but yeah, I, I do really want to go back and revisit this, probably after we talk to the OHA person, or at least after November 1, when we have some idea what's going on with the licensing.
So, the direction I'm hearing from the council tonight is to use the staff recommendation for TPM, setting a new standard for ourselves, for the city. There's a side note to bring marijuana revisions back, and I would, I would suggest that we bring them back perhaps at the same time. If, given the amount of work to be done here, and then needing a bit of time to, to learn and understand, my recommend, what I would recommend for, for the council is that we move forward with these, get an OHA representative to come do a work session with us, this allows staff the time, well, almost allows staff the time they need to do the work, there's a somewhat reasonable timeline. And then, I, I don't know, perhaps we want to try to bring this back January of 2023, so we have a, there's actually an, an, it'll be a, a year from, from the time they're allowed, that gives us a little time without making a fire drill out of meeting with OHA, and gives us some opportunity to, to, to learn more and, and make a more informed decision, unless that timeline sounds like it's too far out to anybody, to any of the counselors. Does a year sound reasonable from the time of implementation? Would, would the council generally like to see it coming back sooner?
I don't think it is a year, is it?
Well, January, ugh, my years, I, January 2024 is what I meant.
I changed it when you made that comment, because I had, I had an error on there, so that's me.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll own it.
I, I didn't even notice the 24, so yeah.
So, so, what I, for clarity, what I meant was that we would bring this back to the council in January of 2024, so it would have a full year from the time that rules go into effect. If that seems like a too-far-out timeline, then we could bump that up a number of months. What I, what I don't want to do is heavily load staff with all the other work that we know is coming over the next number of months.
So, Mayor, if I, if I can clarify, you mean, bring in a code that you adopt based on the conversation we're having tonight with this timeframe we have in front of us, and then as the council learns more about the product and implementation occurs, reevaluate that particular code?
That's what I'm hearing from the council, the council is willing to put in the most restrictive measures tonight to give clear direction, and that there's a, there's a sidebar of coming back and reevaluating, but what I've heard from everyone is that they would like to bring it back to reevaluate. So, the question that I'm asking, Council, is what's a reasonable timeframe to come back and reevaluate? We won't be able to do it before the rules go into effect in January, so how urgently do you want this to come back before you? Councilor Peralta?
Well, I, I, I guess, I, I mean, I heard Kelly change her opinion on, on going forward tonight, and I heard Adam's opinion on going forward tonight, but I didn't think that that represented a full council consensus.
Oh, I'm sorry if.
But that's, but that aside, I wonder if it's, you know, we don't know how voters are going to vote on the two-year moratorium, and so if the moratorium is intact, then there's, whatever we decide to do or don't do, if the moratorium's intact, we don't really need to do anything in a year anyway, because we have a two-year moratorium if that passes.
So, we, and, and we do not have to set a date tonight to come back and reevaluate by any means, it's.
And to the, and to the first point, I, again, I, I, I don't necessarily share Councilor Garvin's concerns that we're going to have the intensity of demand that existed with the marijuana law. I just feel like there was a lot of pent-up demand at that time to have lawful marijuana dispensaries, and I may be wrong, but I just haven't seen the same level of intensity for this. So, I don't think that we're going to get the same type of Wild West rush, I may be off-base, but that's why I'm just questioning why we need to go forward.
Yeah, Councilor Mankey?
I, I, I heard you say, though, that you would accept these as.
I meant with respect to the marijuana.
Oh, that's, and I think that that's where my confusion came in as well.
I mean, I don't, I honestly don't feel that strongly about it, I mean, the, the restrictions seem fairly reasonable, I think what I'm a little uncomfortable with is that if this is genuinely a, a therapy, I just have concerns about regulating it the same way that we do, like, a recreational cannabis dispensary, because I don't think that the functions are the same.
I echo your, I echo your concerns, and I hear Council, Council President Garvin, Garvin's concerns as well.
Yeah, I, I just really feel like if, if it's properly, if the person who's administering it is properly licensed, I get why we might want to do this with the people that are actually going to be growing them and stuff like that, the warehousing stuff, but I, you know, I still want to hear what's happening with the administrator, and probably want to address this sooner than later.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess, and after sort of raising these objections, I, I suggest that you do go forward the way that you're talking about, if I disagree with it, and whenever, I'll just vote against it, but I mean.
Yeah, well, could I suggest something as well? So, my first deadline is noticing DLCD, and that's October 26 to make this deadline, and then the vote occurs on November 8, so we'll know what's going on, and you, I was just talking to Jeff, you have a work session with the school district, November 8 is your city council meeting, but you have a work session with the school district the following week on a Wednesday, and let's say the voters say, yes, we want to bring this in right away, I can come back to you and say, what's the direction you want to do? But at least I've gotten the notice to DLCD, and then if you decide you don't, the voters say, no, let's wait two years, we pull the notice, or you say, no, we don't want to move forward right now with time, place, and manner, even when the voters have brought it in, I can still pull the notice.
So, you're suggesting the, we would add an agenda item to our work session that's currently scheduled with the school district?
Yeah.
Because we'll have an answer on the vote.
Yeah, especially if the election, I mean, if the election comes back and says we want to bring it in, then, then I'll need some direction.
Right.
But the critical piece is the notice to DLCD, that's my lead, my longest lead piece out there.
I feel like that suggestion will satisfy the majority of the council.
That's me.
Yes, thank you.
And then I'll, I have to give DLCD draft code, so I can just draft a code based on what we've dialogued tonight, send that to them, that draft code can always change at any time in the process.
Okay, great.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, it's 6:54 PM, and I will now adjourn the work